Welcome, everybody. We are meeting here today for the special meeting of the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission to consider an Advanced Clean Cars Two Rules, and that's our our single item on our agenda today. As we begin, I do want to acknowledge that all commissioners are present, and I want to take a moment to remember that the mission of DEQ is to be a leader in restoring, maintaining, and enhancing the quality of Oregon's air, land, and water. And so with that, we will get right underway with our presentation in the issue before the commission today.
Thank you, Chair George. For the commissioners, for the record, my name is Michael Orman, and I serve as the Air Quality Planning Manager for DEQ. With me today is Rachel Cicada, DEQ's lead rule writer for the Advanced Clean Cars Two rulemaking, and our resident expert on zero emission vehicle policy and technology. Before I hand the mic to Rachel to review the rulemaking in more detail, I did want to cover at a high level the importance of this rulemaking in context with other recent actions the commission has taken. The Advanced Clean Cars Two Rule, or ACC2, requires auto manufacturers to deliver cleaner vehicles, both zero emission and hybrid options, to Oregon, resulting in an increase in vehicle choice for Oregonians. The air quality and climate benefits that come from the use of these cleaner options align with and support past actions taken by the commission, including the recent passage of the Climate Protection Program, Expanded Clean Fuels Program, Advanced Clean Trucks Rules, and the Round Two Regional Haze Plan. Oregon has also benefited from the implementation of the Oregon Clean Vehicle Rebate Program, which provides a rebate for the purchase of eligible light-duty zero-emission vehicles. All these past actions identified the transportation sector as a major contributor to greenhouse gas and air pollution emissions, and the Advanced Clean Cars Two Rules ensures that manufacturers make cleaner options available for Oregonians to purchase, and in combination with these other rules and programs, will help Oregon achieve its long-term climate and air quality goals. We're excited to bring this action before the commission. Rachel's been working to bring these rules before you for quite some time, and I know she has a lot to cover with you today. And I want to make sure and thank you, Rachel, for your efforts in working on these rules. I'll go ahead and pass the mic to you to go over the rules in more detail.
Great, thank you. And good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Rachel Cicada, and I'm a Senior Air Quality Planner here at DEQ. I am the rule writer for the proposed rulemaking we're discussing here today, which is the Advanced Clean Cars Two Rule. Now, this proposed rule will require manufacturers of new passenger cars and light-duty trucks to produce and deliver to Oregon increasing numbers of zero emission and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, culminating in a 100% requirement by the 2035 model year. We go to the next slide, please. For some quick background on why we need to ensure there are zero-emission vehicles in Oregon, the general impacts of transportation emissions on health, air quality, vulnerable communities, and climate are all well-established. In looking at recent emissions inventory data, the transportation sector is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon, comprising over one-third of the total contribution. Additionally, gasoline and diesel engine emissions can have a disproportionate impact on criteria pollutant levels like ozone, particulate matter, and oxides of nitrogen, or NOx, which could put some areas in Oregon at risk of exceeding the national ambient air quality standards. These air quality pollutant emissions can cause respiratory illnesses on a local level, in addition to other health effects. So this proposed rulemaking helps achieve reductions of these emissions, which will save more lives and result in fewer hospitalizations overall. Go to the next slide, please. Another key element is that these rules are a critical component to achieving the state's greenhouse gas reduction goals. Our initial state target is to reduce greenhouse gas levels 45% below 1990 levels by 2035, and 75% below 1990 levels by 2050. The Oregon Global Warming Commission conducted modeling and determined the adoption of the Advanced Clean Cars Two Regulation, in concert with other EQC actions, such as the Climate Protection Program, the recently adopted targets under the Clean Fuels Program, and the Advanced Clean Trucks Rule, which sets requirements on manufacturers of medium- and heavy-duty vehicles to sell increasing numbers of zero-emission vehicles, is essential to get us the necessary reductions to drive us to our overall greenhouse gas reduction targets. The adoption of these rules also sends a clear message to auto manufacturers and interested parties about Oregon's commitment to clean vehicles. It creates regulatory certainty for the auto market and ensures that the cleanest vehicles are delivered to Oregon. If you go to the next slide, please. Now, I want to remind us of the fundamentals behind adopting motor vehicle standards. Under the Federal Clean Air Act, states are not allowed to establish their own motor vehicle emission standards, with the exception of California. California has set emission standards that are more stringent than those set by EPA, and EPA grants a waiver to California to do this under the provisions of the Clean Air Act. Additionally, Section 177 of the Clean Air Act permits other states to adopt and enforce California's emission standards. If states opt in, they must adopt California's rules identically. Currently, there are 17 other Section 177 states that have opted into California's emissions program. Oregon has been a Section 177 state since 2005, as it recognized the need to reduce greenhouse gases and other air pollutants emitted by vehicles. Many of these states are already implementing the current program called Advanced Clean Cars One, or the Low-Emission Vehicle Zero-Emission Vehicle Rules. Now, with the new Advanced Clean Cars Two Rule recently adopted by California, states are moving to adopt these regulations as well. As of now, California and Vermont have all adopted the Advanced Clean Cars Two Rules, with Washington acting today to adopt. A number of other states, including Massachusetts, New York, and Virginia, have also indicated that they plan to adopt by the end of this year. If we go to the next slide, please. Right now, we have adopted and are implementing California's more stringent rules for passenger cars and light-duty trucks. This program, otherwise known as Low-Emission Vehicle Zero-Emission Vehicle Program, requires manufacturers to produce and deliver for sale a certain percentage of zero emission and plug-in hybrid electric passenger cars and trucks, while ensuring that the gasoline vehicles are low emissions and as clean as possible. When New Oregon first adopted these rules, it applied to the 2009 through 2016 model-year vehicles. Subsequent updates to the program by California in 2012 then applied new requirements for the 2015 through 2025 model-year vehicles, which the EQC adopted and which are in place now. With us having adopted the first phase of the program, now we're moving forward with proposing the second phase, which is the Advanced Clean Cars Two Rules, and applies to the 2026 through 2035 model-year vehicles. Next slide, please. So the proposed rules before you today address light-duty vehicles, otherwise known as passenger cars and light-duty trucks, from the 2026 model year through 2035. These rules would require all new vehicles delivered for sale in 2035 to be 100% zero-emission vehicle. For the purposes of this rule, that includes battery-electric, fuel-cell vehicles, and also plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, which run primarily on electric, but also have a gasoline engine. As you can see from the slide here, the requirements for manufacturers mean that with the 2026 model year, at least 35% of the new vehicles they deliver for sale in Oregon must be zero emission. The requirements ramp up over time until it hits the 100% zero-emission vehicle requirement. In setting these targets, California evaluated the current market and manufacturer commitments. Every major manufacturer that sells light-duty vehicles here has announced electrification commitments. Some manufacturers have signaled the move to all EVs, including GM, Cadillac, and Volvo, all by 2035. Given all this, where does Oregon stand with regards to zero-emission vehicle sales and the potential new requirements? Over the past few years, manufacturers have been over-complying with the ZEP requirements in Oregon. We've also projected they will continue to over-comply through the 2025 model year, up until the new proposed requirements kick in. In the proposed rules, there are a number of optional compliance options for manufacturers to help ensure that they can meet the targets, including early credit value generation, the ability to buy credits, pooling, in which they can earn credits in one state and transfer to another, and opportunities to earn additional credits for environmental justice actions. I'll go into a little more detail later. We go to the next slide. So, as you saw from the previous chart, to ensure that manufacturers are able to meet the 2026 zero-emission vehicle requirement, the rule includes additional regulatory flexibilities and lead time to create a ramp into the 2026 and subsequent model-year requirements for the states. California worked closely with the manufacturers to ensure that there were flexibilities built in to encourage over-compliance, direct action, and a way to manage year-to-year fluctuations, the market, and supply chain disruptions. It also takes into account the increased product offerings that manufacturers have already committed to in the next few years. So we'll start with the first one, which is historical credits. And here, manufacturers can utilize excess credits already earned under the existing Low-Emission Vehicle Zero-Emission Vehicle Program. In general, most of the manufacturers have significant credit banks. These credits will then expire after the 2030 model year. Then there are pooled credits, which means the manufacturers can move excess values earned in one state for use in another state where there is a shortfall relative to the requirement. Manufacturers are allowed to use these pooled credits for the 2026 through 2030 model year. Then there are the early-action credits, which incense the manufacturers to deliver more EVs early, ahead of the 2026 requirements. We go to the next slide. The proposed rules also work to approach environmental justice. This will help ensure everyone can access zero-emission transportation, including new and used EVs. The goal is to incent manufacturers to specific actions to help achieve more equitable outcomes. It includes provisions for manufacturers to earn these compliance values through the following programs. There's a community-based clean mobility program where manufacturers can provide EVs at a minimum 25% discount to a community-based clean mobility program. This could include a program to help increase access to destinations, such as through car-sharing programs, ride-sharing, or van pools. Manufacturers can also earn EJ credits for used EVs delivered to dealerships, such as those coming off lease, for use in a low-income-use financial assistance program, such as dealerships participating in programs that provide rebates or low-interest loans to low-income individuals. Now, because leasing companies often are the financing arm of the vehicle manufacturer itself, or otherwise have some form of agreement with the manufacturer to be the leaseholder, manufacturers typically have some control on where the formerly leased vehicles end up through all of their off-lease auctioning process. Lastly, manufacturers can earn compliance values by producing a low-priced EV that is less than $20,000 for passenger cars and less than $26,000 for trucks. Go to the next slide. Also, recognizing that the rules require manufacturers to ensure their electric vehicles are available, particularly for EJ communities, there are other provisions in the proposed rule to address consumer concerns and the barriers to EV adoption. These requirements provide consumer protection and helps to address drivers' needs about the transition to zero-emission vehicles. It helps ensure that as these zero-emission vehicles enter the used-vehicle market, their emission controls perform properly throughout their life. This is especially essential for those who may not be able to afford a new EV, and purchasing use is the only viable option. The provisions also address consumer concerns about wanting shorter charging time and the availability of charging, especially if home access isn't available. So in order for manufacturers to receive credit for the EVs they produce, they must meet minimum range requirements, such as 150 miles for the battery-electric vehicles and 50 miles for the plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. The rules address vehicle durability through requiring warranties on the battery's state of health. It also includes dual-capability charging cords and for it to be a certain length. Currently, there is no standardization for cords available by the manufacturer, and it ensures that a charging cord can be used anywhere. The provisions also include DC fast-charging capability. Right now, it's not available in all the vehicles, and by requiring this, it increases the charging speed so that it doesn't take us long. And lastly, the rules require battery labeling, which would include information on battery chemistry, manufacturer, voltage, and capacity. It also includes information on hazardous materials or heavy metals, and this would allow users to know information about deactivization, disassembly, and disposal, which ultimately helps with reuse, recycling, or disposal of the battery.
Rachel, may I ask you a question about the battery recycling?
Sure.
In less metropolitan areas, something as simple as, you know, recycling the batteries in our flashlights can be a bit challenging. So they're going to be, you know, requirements for dealers to retake these batteries or for centralized recycling centers to be able to accept the batteries. Perhaps this will be addressed later, because we've said that it's a priority for, you know, there to be equity in the approach to these new requirements. But I was wondering about battery recycling in particular.
Sure, Chair George. There are no current requirements in the rule regarding battery recycling. It will be up to the market to determine how they want to recycle the batteries. But quite frankly, there's actually quite a bit of a market right now for the reuse of the batteries. Manufacturers have indicated that they can reutilize many of the batteries, for example, other vehicles. There's also the capacity to reuse these batteries for other sort of battery capacity needs, whether for other stationary-type backup sources or other items. So I think that as this technology continues to grow, there's going to be a growing need and a growing interest in how to repurpose and recycle these batteries.
Thank you. Commissioner Kyle.
I'm the first one to talk with the mute button on today. Actually, Rachel, it's just a clarification point, because this is part of the cognitive dissonance that I kept having with this, where it's the terminology that we're using so freely that may or may not be confusing to folks that are outside of this realm. So BEVs are battery-only electric vehicles that have that range. When you plug them in, there's no other fuel source to them. Whereas PHEVs is the plug-in gas-hybrid car, where you're going to require 50 miles that's on the electric battery, but then they have the gas tank. And so they'll be running off of the gas tank for the normal range on top of that. Can you just clarify that that's the right kind of way to be thinking about this in very general terms?
Commissioner Kyle, yes, that is correct. What is cited there is what's required of the battery-electric range. That is the minimum range that the manufacturers must meet. So I just want to note that. And right now, many of the manufacturers are already producing vehicles that meet at least 200 to 300 miles for the battery-electric. And with the plug-in hybrid electric, I know that there are vehicles that meet at least 70-mile range just on the electric charge alone.
And then plus the gas tank on it, so they've got hundreds of miles in just petrol.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Addington, did you have a question or comment?
No, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay, thank you, Rachel.
Certainly. All right, so I think we're going to the next slide. All right. So while the rules only require only new zero-emission vehicles be sold after the 2035 model year, many of the new gasoline and diesel passenger cars and trucks, also referred to as internal combustion engines, or ICE engines, sold just prior to 2035, will remain in use for many, many years. The low-emission vehicle component of this rule addresses the air quality impacts from these vehicles. And these changes include more stringent emissions, more stringent emission standards, new standards for aggressive driving and cold starts, and also ensuring that the vehicle fleet moving forward continues to have clean emissions. So really, what this means is that the manufacturers will still be able to sell the gasoline and diesel vehicles up through 2035, and that these vehicles are as clean as possible.
Commissioner Schlesser.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that I'm reading this table or chart correctly. So this indicates that in 2035, when the ACC2 standards kick in all the way, you're still anticipating that around 50% of the cars on the road will be powered by internal combustion engines?
Commissioner Schlesser, yes, that is correct, because it will still take time for the vehicle fleet to turn over. Also, just one other thing, this is a requirement on the manufacturers to sell and deliver for sale. It does not require necessarily anyone to buy them. But as more and more of these vehicles do enter the market, then it is expected there will be continued turnover to where you will see more and more EVs in the market.
Thank you.
Great. All right, if you can go to the next slide, please. I also want to highlight the fiscal and air quality pollution benefits of the rule. We estimate the overall health benefits of the rule provide between $5 to $13 million in savings. One of the key benefits also is the anticipated reduction in CO2 emissions. These will reduce CO2 emissions by 53 million metric tons. We will also see NOx reductions with a reduction of over 3,600 tons by 2035. And really, we'll see between $1 to $5 billion in greenhouse gas emission reduction benefits, which is the monetary benefit today of avoiding those future damages by reducing future carbon emissions. And these future damages could include the effects on agricultural productivity, energy use, human health, property damage from increased flood risk, and other aspects of the economy. So with all these benefits of the rule highlighted, including the public notice, we solicited feedback on the overall rules themselves. So to go to the next slide. Prior to us developing the rules, we conducted early stakeholder involvement to inform the public about the potential regulation. We held a public workshop, and then we held two rule advisory committees to discuss the rules and the fiscal statement. We conducted other meetings with stakeholders and interested parties to inform them of the rules and the requirements. We then held a public comment period in September through October, held two virtual public hearings, and conducted outreach on various social media platforms. As a result, we received over 700 public comments on these rules. Go to the next slide. So just to summarize some of the public comments received, we received over 500 comments in support of the rules. These are some of the main topics highlighted, just basically noting that these rules were designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, the public health benefits, provides regulatory certainty for the vehicle market, provides vehicle choice, and ensures that the zero-emission vehicles will come to Oregon, and also provides consumer protections, durability, and warranty requirements. Next slide, please. However, there are some other concerns raised regarding the rule specifically around infrastructure, and namely that it wasn't ready or available to support the transition under the requirements. Also, there were concerns raised about the lack of charging access in rural areas or for those that do not have access to home charging. Go to the next slide, please. So I just want to point out that charging access is key to ensuring the adoption of EVs and that EV owners can get to their destinations. While most charging will occur at home, there are many efforts to build out both the public and private charging. Right now, there are over 2,100 publicly-available charging stations across the state, with more being built now and in the next few years. As zero-emission vehicle sales increase, the market will be incentivized to respond by providing fast-charging infrastructure along major travel corridors, as well as in less-populated, more rural areas. The state and federal government are also investing in zero-emission infrastructure with a prioritization of investments in rural and disadvantaged communities. For example, the Oregon Department of Transportation has roughly $100 million in spending over the next five years to support the deployment of electric vehicle charging. It will support and build up charging networks along transportation corridors and in rural underserved areas of the state, such as Highways 97, 101, 26, 20, and others. It also includes funding for upgrades along the West Coast Electric Highway. The Department of Transportation is also committing $8 million for its Community EV Charging Rebate Program to support the installation of Level 2 EV charging stations at multi-unit dwellings, stop-and-shop locations, and tourist destinations. Significant private investment is also expected from the electric vehicle service providers or automakers such as GM. Additionally, the recent Federal Inflation Adjustment Act incentivizes further private investment in domestic clean energy manufacturing and supply chains. There's also Oregon's Clean Fuels Program, which requires increasing reductions in the carbon intensity of transportation fuels over time, and it provides critical incentives supporting investments in electric charging. Fuel providers can earn credits, which can then be monetized to pay for charging infrastructure in areas throughout the state. Another thing is that there are utility rebates to support the cost of home and business charging installations. And then there are also building code requirements to require new buildings to have EV charging capacity. All right, go to the next slide, please. Other comments we received raised concerns about electric grid capacity and resiliency, particularly during times of power outages. Utilities are already looking at increased EV charging through planning processes, such as through their Integrated Resource Plan and Distribution System Plan. These plans analyze various load growth scenarios that include forecasted EV adoption, and how the utility will have the power and equipment to prepare for the load increases that may come with EV adoption. Utilities, such as the Eugene Water and Electric Board, have conducted an electrification impact study to look at the impacts of widespread electrification. Other utilities, such as PGE and Pacificor, who have areas that serve small towns and rural areas, have planning requirements that are overseen by the Oregon Public Utility Commission and are essential to ensuring that the investor-owned utilities are ready to meet loads as demands on the system evolve over time. These plans incorporate forecasting capabilities, including locational EV adoption, and assessing how adoption locations overlay with identified existing grid constraints. For example, through each utility's Integrated Resource Plan, it allows the utility to plan ahead to have the generation of resources to serve its load. Also, state agencies and electric utilities have begun proactively planning for electrical distribution upgrades and new load for electric vehicles via statewide energy plans. We are working closely with the Public Utility Commission to plan for this increase in EV charging. And regarding the issue of grid resiliency, the automotive industry is advancing technology and design feature of zero-emission vehicles to facilitate the use of stored electricity in-car batteries to power homes during unplanned power outages, creating a benefit to a household beyond that with a conventional vehicle. Bidirectional charging, which is a feature currently available in Ford's F-150 Lightning and Nissan's Leaf, for example, are capable of sensing when a power outage occurs and automatically feeds power back to the home through the vehicle's charging port. Also with EVs, electrical power can be managed through off-peak charging. So grid infrastructure relies on long-term investments, and with the adoption of the Advanced Clean Cars Two, it provides the certainty for utilities to plan ahead. Go to the next slide. Other concerns raised were around car availability and technology concerns. EVs must have a minimum electric range, so it addresses some of the concerns about range capacity. Even then, manufacturers are already producing vehicles with 300-mile range, and there are plans to unveil 400-mile-range vehicles in the next few years. These rules also include durability warranty requirements to address consumers' concerns. And it ensures that as these new zero-emission vehicles enter the used-vehicle market, their emissions controls will continue to operate properly throughout the lifetime of the vehicle. This particularly helps any used zero-emission vehicle purchaser knowing that the vehicle they buy is reliable. And lastly, it does require the battery labeling to help with future battery recycling or reuse purposes. And while electric vehicles cost more upfront, the electricity to charge the vehicle is cheaper than gasoline. The cost to maintain it is also cheaper due to reduced maintenance costs. In the next few years, the upfront costs will also drop as the price of batteries decrease. In fact, price parity between an electric vehicle and a gasoline vehicle is expected to occur as soon as 2025 for some smaller passenger cars, and no later than 2030. Another thing, too, which you've heard from us many times, is that Oregon also offers rebates to anyone buying or leasing an electric vehicle, which can also be stacked with federal tax credits coming next year to help defray the upfront purchase costs. The proposed regulation also provides The proposed regulation also provides a greater market of vehicle choices for Oregonians because we will be certain to receive all new models and vehicles the manufacturers are rolling out, particularly the zero emission vehicle models. Without it, manufacturers will send these vehicles to states that have opted in, which may force consumers to go outside the state to get the zero emission vehicle that they want. And lastly, I think it's important to note that this rule is not a ban on gasoline vehicles. It is a requirement on manufacturers to produce and deliver for sale only new zero emission vehicles after the twenty thirty-five model year. Used gasoline vehicles can continue to be sold in Oregon, and any vehicle with a gasoline or electric can be registered and driven in the state. All right, go to the next slide, please. So because manufacturers do not need to start complying until the twenty twenty-six model year, we won't have data on their compliance until the following year. So we're recommending a program review, which would be conducted in twenty thirty, which would give us an opportunity to review program compliance through the twenty twenty-nine model year. This would give us three full years of data to assist compliance and implementation, particularly to look at how environmental justice measures are being implemented. At the same time, California will have just completed its own program review of the zero emission vehicle market conditions, compliance, and implementation. And so based on this, it will allow us to determine whether we need to work with California to make adjustments to the program if needed, or if manufacturers are able to meet the targets. You go to the next slide, please. In summary, these rules are a foundational strategy to help Oregon achieve its greenhouse gas reduction goals. It increases vehicle choice by ensuring manufacturers send the newest zero emission and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles to Oregon. Also, it, zero emission vehicles are cheaper to own, providing greater savings for the consumers. And lastly, the rules include environmental justice components to ensure there's equitable access to zero emission vehicles by making more affordable electric vehicles available. And if we go to the next slide. So I'll just wrap it up here and basically say that in conclusion, DEQ recommends that the Environmental Quality Commission adopt the proposed rules as seen in the staff report for this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Uh, so commissioners, do we have uh comments or questions about the presentation now? Commissioner Kyle.
Thanks Kathleen, and thank you, Rachel. Um. Comments, and then actually, uh. I'll start with the comments on this. Um, I really first want to thank Rachel and Michael, all the staff, uh, and also the rack that pulled together this rule. This was a lot of work, um, and I appreciate all of that. And that being said, I did have a hard time wrapping my head around this one. So I spent an inordinate amount of time, I think, doing all of the reading, all of the background reading. I went deep on auto reviews. I've watched more car shows than I've ever seen before in my life uh and kind of went crazy. Um, and I realized that some of this was based in misunderstandings, and then also some of this was just based in my own shared concerns with what was raised actually uh by the public. So the first misunderstanding, and I appreciate Rachel, you um uh explaining it a bit more in the rule, was that this is often being shortened to a ban on gas cars um in Oregon, and that's not true. Um, so it's it's an unfair painting of this rule. Uh, so I do appreciate the fact that you clarified that and that this is um an opportunity, and it's really geared towards the manufacturers. There will be gas cars, there will be plug-in hybrid options, there will be battery options, and who knows, in the future, there might be hydro options. It doesn't have anything to do with the used car market. Um, and if you are absolutely wedded to an internal combustion engine, you can still register it in the state. You just have to buy it out of the state. So is that a fair summary of why the ban is not an accurate?
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Kyle, that is correct.
Yeah, so I appreciate that, and and um I I hope that myth dies. That being said, um there's a lot of things in there, too. Like, I wish we could have delayed this a little bit. It felt, you know, like there was areas of uncertainty that made me nervous as well, and it really took me a lot of thinking uh and conversations to kind of wrap my head around it, that this is a rule that's directed towards car manufacturers, and it's really designed to uh give Oregon a smooth and faster transition to what the manufacturers are going to be producing in the very near future anyway. So this is really about putting Oregon first in line. Um, the consumer protection rules that are in this rule help to tighten up some of those loopholes that are currently in this market, so I appreciate that. Um. It's also going to make sure that these models come to Oregon because we're going to be a market, so I appreciate that. And then from the environmental benefits, I do wish ozone had been considered because I think that's one that I've brought up quite a few times every time we have a state of Oregon. Ozone's been creeping up. Um, and it's not a violation yet, but it is one of the uh primary air pollutants that is increasing, and it's even though when we talk about this at State Oregon, the wildfires often get blamed, um, it is traffic-related pollution, and it's the congestion aspects of it. So I think if ozone had been put in here, uh, it would have, it would have actually helped improve the public health benefits of this, of this model. So that, all that being said, we've also got a lot of proof um that the passenger cars, ZEV passenger cars actually work really well and that they do offer cost-saving benefits for people that have adopted that technology. It just hasn't, there's still pockets of uncertainty where this has not been proven. And I'm going to kind of put them into four buckets. So this is still comment. Um, but we could go through each of the buckets because where I'm, where I'm going with this is um I do want to make amendment that would expand the program review component of the rule. So the first bucket of uncertainty that we have is really whether these models of ZEV vehicles are going to deliver what the manufacturers are saying they're going to deliver. So in the program rules, we do have currently three metrics that are kind of trying to get at that um bucket, but we're, we don't know, and especially in the light-duty truck segment. Um, we don't have a plug-in electric light truck at the moment. We don't have very many options of an electric truck. And that concerns me. Small-duty trucks are are a big part of uh the market. The other bucket that we don't really have, we have some uncertainty, is this is a dynamic state, is the electrical grid, whether it's going to be able to meet the demands of increased electricity, um, and whether or not House Bill twenty twenty-one increases the grid capacity while also reducing greenhouse gas. So this is still an unproven future state. Um, that's an area of uncertainty that we're not just swapping one thing for another. The other kind of big bucket of uncertainty is uh whether we're going to have a charging infrastructure that's able to do this and fast charging infrastructure, particularly in places where we know it's going to be challenging, like multi-unit dwellings and uh along kind of where it still needs to be built out. So where we do have investment planned, but it hasn't happened yet. And then the fourth big bucket is really kind of the fiscal impact of this overall and the equity of the price of transportation for Oregonians. Is this going to have an unintended consequence on the the used car market and the new car market, also future state and everything else? So I do have an amendment that I would like uh to propose, and I'm going to look to Chair George to say whether this is the right time or not, or actually give Rachel a chance to respond to kind of those big four buckets.
So my suggestion would be this, let's give Rachel a chance to respond, and then let's uh, let's have you present your thoughts about an amendment in regard to reporting timeframe and structure. And then I also think that uh interim Director Leah Felden has some thoughts on the exact same topic. So let's, let's go in that order, Rachel.
Thank you.
Sure. So you brought up a lot of really great topics, and I'm happy to address them uh as I remember them. You, you brought up a topic on uh the light-duty trucks and the availability of them. Um, I think I just want to mention that there are a few pickup trucks available on the market right now. I, uh, there's the F-150, the Rivian Pickup, which does have a towing capacity of eleven thousand pounds. There's even the GM Hummer and the Lordstown Endurance that just came out, I believe, last month. Uh, you've got other lines such as the Chevy Silverado that's expected to roll out next year, in addition to a few other trucks announced by the manufacturers. And so I think I just want to note that all of these trucks were or are being developed and produced before even the Advanced Clean Cars II was adopted by California because with many of the model lines, manufacturers have to plan out and build them uh many years in advance. So with the adoption of these rules, it sort of sets the bar for the manufacturers to make sure that they can develop these types of trucks to, quite frankly, meet the need. I think there's another thing, too, that uh you all adopted the Advanced Clean Trucks rule, and so that does require medium-duty truck manufacturers to deliver zero emission vehicle pickup trucks for sale as early as twenty twenty-five. They will need to develop uh trucks with greater battery, battery capacity and carrying load, and I strongly suspect that much of that technology will filter down to the light-duty sector to meet the range and hauling needs of other Oregon residents. Uh, so those are some things that I just want to highlight uh with regards to the light-duty trucks. I think uh you mentioned something also just about um electrical grid and chart and infrastructure availability. Uh, I mentioned a little bit earlier, but Oregon does have a number of strategic planning processes that focus on utility infrastructure planning. This includes collaboration with state agencies and partners um to to sort of help lead these efforts. For example, you've got the Oregon Department of Energy, which compiles its biennial, biennial zero emission vehicle report, known as BISA, um, that is tasked with evaluating the electricity needs of zero emission vehicles. Also, the utilities must provide regularly updated integrated resource plans and distribution system plans, which evaluate the projected EV adoption to ensure that the electrical grid can manage the charging needs and ensure that future upgrades are planned. Right now, all the utilities have indicated that they can meet charging needs right now and at least five years into the future. But with the adoption of the Advanced Clean Cars II rules, it allows them to put this into their future plans and start building that out now so that when the vehicle uh adoption requirements are at a hundred percent twenty thirty-five, they are ready to handle that capacity. Um, additionally, as the zero emission vehicle sales increase, the market will be incentivized to respond by providing fast charging infrastructure along the major travel corridors, as well as in less populated, more rural areas. You've got the hundred million dollars coming that ODOT is distributing over the next five years to uh make charging access available, and then there's a lot of efforts going on underway to ensure that there's charging access in rural and um in uh areas with multi-unit dwellings. Let's see here. So I think I covered those two. Um, let me see if there, what else did I forget?
The, the big buckets are the manufacturers being able to actually deliver what their, what their glossy brochures are telling us.
Thank you.
That, that, that the grid uh can support the increased demand with lower greenhouse gas emissions per kilowatt emitted, you know, created. The public-private partnerships are going to happen, happen in infrastructure. And then the third one is just kind of unintended fiscal consequences of this uh on the used car and the new car market so that we can make sure that Oregon isn't paying more than a state that isn't doing this, which is a harder bucket and normally not something that uh DQ, like, we know it's cheaper to drive an EV vehicle, but how does this play out in the future? So it's kind of that equity fiscal impact component in a dynamic market.
Sure. So I think there are, Commissioner Kyle, I think there are a few other things related to uh the cost of vehicles, especially in the future. One of the components in the rules uh does require that the manufacturers produce and deliver for sale cheaper uh EVs. Uh, they must, uh, they can earn compliance credit for producing a passenger car that's less than twenty thousand dollars, a pickup truck that's less than twenty-six thousand dollars. I think just market demand is going to drive a lot of this, too. So uh as you have, if you have more EVs available in the market, it will also help to bring the overall costs down. Cost parity is also expected to occur in the next few years, so you're not going to see these EVs that have a much higher sticker price right now than the gasoline vehicles. So I think overall, it, it will uh sort of even out, and I think, too, just with those people who do own EVs, you see that total cost of ownership benefit being realized within at least the first year for some of the battery-electric vehicles, and so you see that cost savings right away. Um, I think they're just, these are one of many things that I think will be occurring as you see more and more of these zero emission vehicles on the road. Um, I think another thing, too, that you mentioned is just with the manufacturer uh compliance components. I, I want to note that manufacturers have up to three years to make up their compliance obligation if they fail to meet the requirement in that model year. And there are also a number of compliance flexibilities built into the rules. So if, for example, a manufacturer does not meet their twenty twenty-six obligation, they have it up until uh the twenty twenty-eight model year to sort of make up that shortfall. Additionally, you know, the manufacturer can meet compliance through utilizing bank excess credits. They've already earned under the existing program. In Oregon, they've been over-complying with the existing rules, and then they can earn early compliance credit by placing EVs early in Oregon ahead of the requirements or through other environmental justice actions or transferring credits earned in other states to Oregon if there is a shortfall. So I think there's a lot of ability for the manufacturers to be able to meet the projected goals that have been established in this rule. Let's see here. I don't know if I missed anything else.
No, you hit the big four buckets, so thank you. I know this is um, this has been a lot for me to process, so I appreciate it. But I will let other people have a raise question, but I don't need to hog the whole time.
Well, so let's talk a little bit about, you know, you raised uh the issue of reporting and um, and, and your questions and concerns, your buckets, uh in many cases do address, you know, further actions that are what make these goals work, right? And so i- in light of that, I think there has been some interest in um more opportunities for reporting, so both that could potentially provide opportunities for course correction if things don't develop the way, you know, we anticipate they do today, uh, and also the opportunity for Oregon uh to react to that. So I think, I think Director Leah Felden has some thoughts on how this could work. Leah, would you like to address that?
Sure. Thank you, Chair George, Commissioner Kyle. So um yeah, I was just going to offer up that this might be a good time. Um, staff and I have been working with Commissioner Kyle a little bit, talking about some of these issues and, and talking about um what, what program review might look like in the future. And uh Rachel highlighted, and the rules, the section that does cover uh program review with, which in the rules is slated for twenty thirty, and in the actual rules, it lists some pieces that a program review would cover. And I think um, you know, what staff have heard and what we're hearing today is that um the commission and the public really could benefit from a, a more expansive program review and perhaps um a few program reviews that happen in um every couple of years instead of one in twenty thirty. So um, we have, I, I don't want to cut conversation short on other, you know, issues, but we have um, um drafted some language that could replace that program review section for the rules that the commission could consider as an amendment to the proposed rules, and it's just that program review section that, that we've enhanced a bit. Um, a- and I do want to say, I think what, you know, Rachel's been describing here and what this presentation's been um really trying to nail down for everyone, and I think you did really well with your comments as well, Commissioner Kyle, is that these rules, I, I, they're really um, in my view, a support mechanism. these rules, they're really, in my view, a support mechanism. They're, they're really not even the driving force for the change that is happening nationally to, to vehicle fleets. Vehicle fleets are changing. Auto manufacturers are changing those. Electric infrastructure is coming and the grid is preparing for it. I see these rules for Oregon as a support mechanism so that Oregon can be successful in this transition. We've got, you know, some regulated entities out there, regulated in different ways that need some regulatory certainty. And this provides it to them well in advance, 13 years in advance of the first compliance moment. Auto manufacturers, utilities, infrastructure investors, all of those folks need signals and, and these rules would create a signal in Oregon that yes, we intend to further electrify the new vehicle fleet in Oregon. Bring the cars here, bring your infrastructure here and for the grid, get it ready. So just a perspective on kind of how these rules by this commission fit into this market turnover that is happening nationally. But let me, let me turn it back to you Chair and we can, we can look at amendment language for that program review or we could go back to some comments from commissioners.
Great. I think that's, that's just fine. But I'd like, I wanted to get that idea out and on the table so that, you know, if we want to have some discussion around that, we can do that as well. So one other thought I'd just like to share about my conversations with our staff in regard to this is from the perspective of a small government. Right out here on the Grand Ron Reservation, but we are considering several different, you know, needs to invest in charging infrastructure. One, for a large tourist destination business. Two, for a gas station. Three, for housing. And four, for a government campus. And we're just one little reservation. We know that cities, counties, you know, any large institution, universities, large corporations, people are going to need to be investing in charging technology. This is where this market is going. And this is where vehicles are going to a large degree, not entirely. We know we'll have internal combustion vehicles for a very long time. That being said, I have to say that while as Rachel's presentation suggested, there's sources of funding that are coming and that are expected. Right now, I think it's very confusing for maybe, you know, small jurisdictions or organizations to know, you know, should we wait for that? Should we wait for grants? Who will they come from? Will they come from ODOT? Will they come from a federal source? Should I take this deal that this gas station is offering us? They're saying they'll put in charging stations. So one of the things I, I talked to DEQ about was what I believe is a need for some state coordination. And then some opportunity for a centralized source of information to kind of all those entities, to you all who must, who wish to invest in charging infrastructure. Here's what is known. Here is the timeframes around which we think we'll have additional details regarding this sort of funding, you know, regarding those sorts of grants. It's anticipated that they'll address these sorts of needs. Because in, in talking to other people from small governments, there's kind of just like, well, they say money's coming and it might come from here and it might come from there, but we just don't know. So I, I found DEQ staff kind of very open to that idea and saying, yeah, I think that's definitely something we can do. We can work out and talk to our partners and identify this as a need, even if we can't give all the answers yet, but identify that there's a need for a centralized source of information for people to be in communication with. So that's just another idea I wanted to share. Other thoughts or questions that we should get on the table and discuss now? Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. So I really appreciate Molly's points. I think I have a lot of the same sort of comments and, and I guess the first thing I would say is I want to really acknowledge the staff on this because they spent a lot of time with me. And I had a lot of questions and they answered a lot of those questions. I still have, I still have some concerns, but I have to say that my time talking with staff, I do not oppose to the direction, I'm not opposed to the direction this is going. It's made me feel much more sort of comfortable with the notion of electric vehicles and, and what that might mean, even, you know, in places like Eastern Oregon. But I do just have some things I can't quite get over. And Rachel, you've mentioned some of them and addressed some of Commissioner Kyle's points, but I just want to go through them again. And I don't, I don't need to make you have to repeat yourself. I just, I just have to sort of get these things out there, I think. For me, you know, I just think there's a whole lot of people in this state that don't, don't get where this is going and why it's going there. And so the optics and the messaging on this, I think, is not, it's not your guys' job, I suppose. But I just feel like we have not, we generally have not done a good job of talking about what this means, why it's not a ban on gasoline. I mean, people think that's what it is. And I mean, a lot of people think that's what it is. And so, you know, I just think that the messaging could and should be better about this. At the end of the day, I mean, this is, this is a mandate. This is government telling Oregonians what they need to do. And we can say it's not limiting choice, but it is. I mean, it is. In, in 2035, it will limit what you can buy at an auto dealership. And we could be sending people out of state to, you know, if we don't do this, I heard you say people will go out of state to purchase their electric vehicles. Well, people are going to have to go out of state if they want to purchase a combustion engine. And so, I mean, I understand there's a used market and I get all that. But it just, it's this mandate versus the market thing that I'm, I'm having some trouble with. I also have just this list of things that you have done a good job of addressing, Rachel, that the technology is, or the planning or the technology is either there or assumed to be there. But it's the assumed to be there part I'm struggling with. I read a lot about lithium mining and what that means and what the consequent environmental impacts of lithium mining is. I don't, I don't really know. I'm no expert in all that, but I wonder about that and availability of that for battery production. The power grid capacity. You know, we had a presentation, I don't know, was it the last meeting from Pacific Power about their planning process and about the grid. I, I mean, honestly, I think that was less than satisfying to me. I didn't hear them say we should be fine. I heard them say that they're planning for it and, and I just, it just left a little bit on the table for me. Is it, is it really going to be fine? The availability of light duty work-related vehicles. I've seen the Lightning F-150 out there. I think there's one available for sale in the state today. I've heard a lot of stories about its capabilities as a work vehicle versus just a driving around vehicle. Towing, for example, is a challenge. Charging time is a challenge. And again, I assume technology will catch up and address all these things over time, but I don't, I don't for sure know that. And then I always, you know, when you showed the map, the, the charging infrastructure around the state of the proposed charging infrastructure. I mean, it's good, but there's a whole lot of Oregon in those white gaps. You know, there's a whole lot of Oregon out there. And I just wonder about the utility still of electric vehicles in some of these places and for some jobs. I also think if we would have said, let's shoot for 95% in 2035 or 90% in 2035, it would go down a lot easier for a lot of people. When you say 100%, it just, it just bothers people and, and frankly, it bothers me a little bit. And so I, I have other things on this list. I wish there could have been a more regional approach. I do think this is different when you talk about it and on the west side, in the Portland, in the metro area, in the Wild Valley. I just do think it's different than some other parts of the state. I wish we could have talked about that a little bit. Wish we could have talked about possible exemptions for agriculture or forestry or construction. Just because I don't know about the utility of some of these light duty vehicles. Understanding used vehicles are available. I get all that. So I just want to see that the technology exists. And it's going to be okay before we lock in. And, and so that's sort of where I'm at. Again, I want to just go back and say, and I can't underscore this enough. The staff has been great and answered so many of my questions on this and personally has put me in a more comfortable spot about it. I just feel the need to sort of talk a little bit for a bunch of my friends and neighbors that I think just do not understand this. And I, I just want to express that. And I think I'm going to have a hard time supporting that. And it's not because I don't want it to pass or I don't think it's going to pass. I just think I want to send a message that there are unanswered questions out there and still a lot of concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schlesser.
Thank you Chair. And thank you to Commissioners, Commissioner Addington and Commissioner Kyle. I really appreciate you voicing your concerns with this rule. And I understand where you're coming from. I, I think this rule is really important for Oregon. I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to put ourselves on a more strategic and efficient path for electrifying the transportation sector and a more equitable path for trans, for electrifying the transportation sector. My main concerns, I, I'm looking at this more from a, like a least regret standpoint. And if we, if we don't adopt this rule here today, I think that the, the transportation system will still electrify. We just won't have the same number of options here. We won't be providing that regulatory certainty to our utilities, to auto manufacturers. We just won't have the same options. The grid won't be able to, we, we won't be upgrading the grid in a real strategic cohesive way that's proactive rather, rather than reactionary. And if we're struggling to upgrade the grid as quickly as possible because we already have that demand on the system, that additional demand, that to me is what's a scary scenario. I'm confident that we will be able to upgrade the grid in time to achieve these 2035 goals. But I do, I do understand your concerns. I mean, this is, it's different, right? It's a totally different way of thinking about how we, how we drive cars, how we fuel cars. One thing I just wanted to note quickly that I, I think is really exciting about transportation electrification. And I think it, it often gets overlooked when we talk about charging infrastructure and the ability to charge whenever you want and range anxiety and whatnot. Right now, you have to go to a gas station to fuel up if you don't have an EV. And there are small towns that don't have gas stations. You have to drive really far to go to a gas station. If there's any problem at that gas station, you might have to drive to another town. But with EVs, every building, every parking lot, anywhere where there's an electric line is potentially a gas station. And so I see this as providing way more opportunity to charge in, in just you have a wider variety and you can charge at home and you don't have to take time out of your day to go to a gas station and figure out like how, logistically, how that's going to work. So I just wanted to note that, that it might actually make life a lot easier for people and it seems scary right now. But I think we'll reach a point in time where we're going to look back and be like, we used to go to gas stations? Like what was that all about? So that's just my two cents. I also want to thank staff. I know that you put a tremendous amount of time and work into this and I really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. And I, I just wanted to add one note too, and, and want to be super clear that this is not in any way disagreeing with the sentiments provided by anybody. But one of the, you know, expressions which I'm very sympathetic with is that, you know, I wish the goal could be, you know, different. I wish the goal could be like 95% or something like that. And, and just to clarify, and, and Rachel did kind of cover this. But if, if we take, you know, this step, if we stay in line with California's goals, and my understanding is that there has to be completely 100% in line with California's goals. States don't have the option to say, well, we like California, except we're going to tweak this. And again, I also know that all the commissioners understand that. But I'm just saying that out loud because we know we have other folks on the line here who may not be aware that, that it's not kind of a, a bit of a pick and choose situation that if states are either in and they're in for the full slate of the California standards or they're not. And I know that Commissioner Addington understands that, but I just know that we are also sharing this conversation with a lot of people who are thinking and talking about this. And so I just wanted to be clear about that. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Addington.
Just thank you actually for making that point, Chair George. That is true and I appreciate that. It just, it just reminds me of the other point I wanted to make, which is I, I think there's a large portion of the state that thinks we're crazy for following California's lead on anything. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner and Director Felden.
I hesitate. I see Ali's hand and, and he may want to say the same thing. So maybe I'll be brief and see if he wants to expand. But Chair George, I thought maybe I could, I could take a moment and talk about the California standards in case there's confusion out there about why we are proposing standards to you today in Oregon that are like California's. I think there could be a perception that it's Oregon wanting to have California-style rules, which really isn't, isn't accurate. The way that the Clean Air Act is set up, a long time ago, it was, it was set up to give California a waiver so that they could develop their own emission standards for cars. And that's because of extreme pollution issues that California has and a lot of it by the transportation section. So in, in, in receiving that waiver, it was determined that the best way nationally for car manufacturers to be able to manage is to have no more than these two systems, right? A federally mandated system and a system where California has a waiver and states could therefore go with those emission standards. So just to, just to help clarify, you know, California, that's why they go first. It's not that the other states specifically want to follow and be like California. It's that in the law, they're given the ability legally to go first. They also, with that ability comes the resources, the money, the people to do the work with the car manufacturers to ensure that they are capable of meeting these standards. So California actually has those resources to do that work, to do all of the studies and to do all of the upfront discussions with the auto manufacturers to set up the system that other states can then take advantage of and replicate without spending the money on those same resources. So it's an important function that they play in a sense in going first so that other states can utilize what they did in their fiscal impact research and technological research. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
I, I do think that's, that's a really helpful point. I think you interim director, that, that there are some efficiencies built into that, that then those additional burdens don't follow for every state in the way. And, and you know, I think, and we appreciate Commissioner Addington's perspective as well. Some people, that's just simply how they're going to feel. They don't, they don't like the idea of Oregon following California's footsteps. But, but as you say, this actually provides some real efficiencies for those states who want to address goals of that sort. Ali.
Chair George, thank you Commissioners. Ali Mirzakalili, Air quality administrator here. Thank you. You covered the point that I wanted to cover, which is if we had a choice to follow Minnesota's rule, we would have considered it. But this is a binary choice for us. Clean Air Act only allows us to look at California or a state with a federal government. The other point is, I just wanted to touch on the 100% target. And, and that is, I think it aligns well with what manufacturers have said they're going to do. They're, they're not going to do 95%. They're just, they're transforming themselves out. They're, they're stopping manufacturer of internal combustion engines. They will not invest into different technologies. This is a major pivot point for them. And I think it, so it, it what So it, it, what, what we're doing essentially aligns well with their stated. You know, goals. I think we have, and Rachel, we can jump in here and, and cite the manufacturers have already stated. Better than I can, GM, Ford and others have already said. I think BW that that's all they're going to do. So I think it, you know, we're. We're, we're, that's what California is, is sort of holding them to it, to that commitment and, and what direction that they're heading. And I think it aligns well. Commissioner Kyle had another bucket, and I think the ozone issue, I think you had put in there. And as, as you just want to address that real quick, which is. As you know, the NOx emissions from internal combustion engines, that are precursor to ozone formation and that's around Port metro area. It's a big issue. And, and, and other metropolitan areas have also, you know, are suffering from that. Conversion to zero emission vehicles is. A key solution to that. That eliminates those NOx, you know, low speed. Idling times, the congestion, those emissions you get during those times. It, it is just that some of the models don't. Account for the health benefit. It's usually the asthma reduction that you get. It doesn't monetize well. And I think that's the, the difference that, that you see here. PM models usually the direct mortality endpoints. They, they have a different monetary benefit, you know, that, that come up, but this has a long-term health benefit associated with it. What we see that's been a key economic development point for us. We don't want to be in an entertainment. Designation here as, as ozone standards gets lowered. Appropriately to protect public health. I think we just need to make sure that our precursor emissions are also lowered as. You know, VM vehicle miles traveled increases. You know, we just need to make sure that those are cleaner miles traveled and, and, and zero emission vehicles. This is, this aligns well. Perfectly well with, with other ambitions that we have around this state. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ali. All right. Well, I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. So. Interim Director, do you think this is a good time perhaps to? Just maybe share the draft language that staff has worked on that could. Kind of direct that more frequent check-in?
Thank you, Chair George. I think it is. We will see. Stephanie has a hand up. We'll see if she's able to share that or if she would like us to. Stephanie? Stephanie, you're on mute if you're speaking.
We, I know that Stephanie has had a little bit of technical challenges here. And so. We are working to fix that.
Here we go. Stephanie, are you there now?
Thank you. Yes, I am unmuted. I apologize. This is Stephanie Caldera, the EQC assistant. My internet decided it was time to rest. So it did kick me out of the meeting. Unfortunately, I will need to be reassigned. I believe co-host or host rights before I am able to share. A document that I believe does reflect the amendment potential language. So it'll be just a moment. Currently, I believe a current co-host or, or host. Of the meeting may be able to offer. That.
So I have it, I have it queued up if, if it's easier for me to share it. And you're gonna. Hear my dogs in the background now because of course they're, they're chiming in. So in the spirit of adding an Oregon twist to the rules. Where I would like more frequent check-ins and a more thorough program review than what is, what was originally in the rules. So this would be in Section Four. Under the program reviews and it would allow us to kind of. More frequently. Evaluate those uncertainty buckets. So beginning in twenty twenty-eight and every two years through twenty thirty-four. DEQ will provide a review of program implementation in Oregon, including but not limited to. A, an evaluation of vehicle manufacturer compliance. B, a summary of the publicly available information on vehicle and battery costs. C, an assessment of the deployment of ZEVs in low-income and disadvantaged communities. D, a description of the geographical distribution of new and used ZEVs and. Plug-in electric hybrids by registration. E, an evaluation of the electrical grid and its current capacity to meet the charging needs related to ZEV light-duty vehicles. And F, a summary of the infrastructure deployment. So it greatly expands what was in the original rule. And requires it every two years, which will more closely mirror the biennial update that the energy sector does. And also that the market sector does. So that's, that's my proposed amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to clarify, as we begin consideration of this amendment. This draft is, you have presented it here, has been discussed and reviewed by DEQ staff. Is that correct?
Hi Chair George, this is for the record interim director Leah Felden. Yes, EQC or TEQ staff have. Been working on this with Commissioner Kyle to enhance the. Rule language that's in the proposed rules and. You know, just for everyone's clarification out there, this section did already exist. As Commissioner Kyle said, there was already a program review. Under two five seven zero zero five zero. What it does is change. The year of the review from being a one-time in twenty thirty to every two years between these years, which would amount to four program reviews. And then adds three subparts. So more substantive program review. In terms of what would be included.
Great, thank you. Think that that's just helpful for, for everybody who's listening's information. All right.
And if Stephanie is there, I can stop sharing. She, this is just the. She has the full wabangy, the full thing.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Yes, Stephanie.
And thank you. Unfortunately, as I have not been able to regain the co-host or host rights, which. Rachel, I think you are the host. You may need to assign me. Apologies for the technical difficulties. If you click on my name, there should be a button to the right that says more and then assign as co-host. Apologies all. But let's just walk through that and make sure because I, I should be able to then bring up that information. Thank you for assigning that information back to me. And here, Chair George, I believe I do have the full amendment. Of revised language, which I will now share to screen, which does reflect what Commissioner Kyle just shared. And also I do want to note Commissioner Addington has had to move to a phone connection today. And I believe let's, let's make sure we get him connected. If he has a request to raise hand, I believe that is star nine on his touchtone telephone.
Commissioner Addington, did that star nine work for you? We haven't heard you yet.
And we do see him with a hand up. I'm going to press ask to unmute, which should prompt him. To be available to unmute his telephone line at this time.
Right.
And Commissioner Addington, I believe you are unmuted if you would like to check in or speak. Otherwise, we just have you connected now as you are connected by telephone.
Okay, you guys can hear me okay?
Yeah, I hear you great.
Okay, thank you. I'm good to go.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners or staff, really, and, and you know, any, anyone here at our virtual table. If you have questions or comments about this proposed amendment, I would invite them at this time. Well, I'll just offer that I, I appreciate the amendment. I definitely consider this a friendly amendment, so to speak. And I think that it addresses some of the, the key issues people have raised, or at least it provides for earlier. You know, notice and, and opportunities to either, you know, course correct. Or see what responses or incentives or coordination might be necessary and to do that earlier. If we don't see the kind of developments that have been discussed here and that are expected. You know, the best communications and best projections do expect these developments, but we do understand that they're future events. And things can happen that are unexpected. So that's one of the reasons that I appreciate this amendment. I think it allows Oregon to set those kinds of goals. That will motivate or continue to spur development in the market for the developers, for our energy grid. But also gives us the opportunity to check along the way. And work with others if needed to do, take the actions needed to allow for these goals to be implemented. Any other perspectives? Ali.
Chair George, thank you. Ali Mirzakalili here at DEQ. That I, I think, again, I was concerned as we were striking the. Adding additional requirements here, had, had the concern about the. Resources that takes to develop this. You know, the report, but these are the kind of things that we monitor anyway. Just checking with staff, we will be looking at this. And I hope you don't mind seeing us more frequently, but if that's the case, you just have to balance that. So. Who will be in front of you. So I, I think it's, it, these are. Real thoughtful additions that we are happy to provide you with updates. As frequently as you like. I think this is, this is very doable. I appreciate the. The comments and, and the amendment.
Thank you. I do appreciate the, the commentary because that is, was a, a thought of mine and I appreciate hearing. That these are the kinds of things that staff will be reviewing anyway, and so you do not anticipate there to be a significant, a significant additional cost. Vice Chair Barasso, followed by Commissioner Schlesser.
I, I similarly, I think I, I think I was, I was waiting to hear from Ali and I appreciate hearing that. In some ways, I'm. More sensitive to what does it take to produce this information? And, and, and have that in a way that, that gives us something that's workable. And so I, I appreciate hearing that. I, I think so much of this is being able to have a, a certain sightline. I mean. Much of what we're entering in terms of this next landscape is going to be quite dynamic. So having this information, I think is great. It's going to be helpful for us to check in. And understand where things are. And, and I have a certain level of confidence that. Given, given sort of the, the actions that California has enabled us to take. And, and us taking potential other jurisdictions, that it sends a, a clear signal for, for folks to be able to. Further produce these things and, and, and meet some of these clear. And important consumer protection elements that are, that are part of this. So I appreciate seeing this and I appreciate this. Let's just dig into that. And see how it's going along the way. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair George. I, I want to echo the statements of that other commissioners have made. I think that this is a great addition. I think that it, it will be really helpful to evaluate our progress, to. Figure out how far we've come, where we still have to go. I think this is a great, will be a great opportunity to share this information with the public and make sure that. All Oregonians are aware of how far we've come and I'm, I'm. Very supportive of this edition and I want to thank Commissioner Kyle for putting. The, for making this happen and to DEQ staff for being flexible and really just. Stepping forward and drafting this language and. Making sure that we're adopting rules that everybody is comfortable with and are at work best for Oregon.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chair George, can you hear me?
I can. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you. I also appreciate the amendments and. While I don't, while I'm not there yet on the big picture of where we're going, I am supportive of these amendments because I think it makes it. A better rollout and more cautious. So. I'll be in support of the amendment.
Thank you very much. Well, having heard from all the commissioners now, a, a voice of support for the amendment, that's great to hear. And I too appreciate our staff, both for all the work they've done, but also for their flexibility to work with us on the fly. And, and find the best fit so that we can move forward in the best way. So here, having heard no lack of support or no opposition to the amendment. Stephanie has prepared a amended motion proposal. So I would be willing to entertain a motion at this time. Go for it, Vice Chair.
I moved that the Environmental Quality Commission adopt the proposed rules as seen on pages forty-two through sixty-three of the staff report. For this item with the amended language for OAR three forty dash two fifty-seven dash zero zero five zero. As discussed at the meeting and shown in Amendment One as part of Chapter Three Forty of the Oregon Administrative Rules.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Do we require further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Once again, I want to thank our staff and our commission for the robust discussion. For the sharing of concerns and ideas. That's what we should do as the Environmental Quality Commission. And I truly appreciate the goodwill that everybody came to the table with today. Now, in addition to that, and something that I don't believe belongs in the rules, but I do think is something we should follow up with. Is I'd like to ask interim director Leah Felden to work with the appropriate staff along the ideas of what we discussed, which is. This transportation infrastructure is changing. It is now, it will, and we know that as communities, we need to gear up for it. But we know that right now the situation is rather confusing, especially for small communities that may not have a lot of capacity. So can we ask you, Director Felden, to work with the appropriate staff over, say, the next couple of months? And come back to the EQC, perhaps as part of a director's update. With some ideas about how the state of Oregon can provide a central source of information. Sooner rather than later. For those many different communities, businesses, components of state government, whatever it may be. But the people who are going to be investing in charging infrastructure so that we can be supporting. Communities being able to make the best decisions for their community as they make these new investments.
Thank you, Chair George. Yes, I actually see a lot of what we just talked about today as, as fitting together nicely. You know, with what you're referring to, just for, for everyone listening, and there are so many. Funding opportunities coming from the federal level right now, in particular with regard to. Infrastructure and some through the Inflation Reduction Act, but particularly with regard to the infrastructure. Bill. And, and we're seeing those dollars coming in in different ways and some, and some they are coming through for. Water quality improvements and infrastructure and some they're coming through for climate and greenhouse gas reduction. You know, which is relatable here and, and certainly a lot of those dollars that are intended to support our. Lower income and disadvantaged communities that may need those dollars most. So we have a real opportunity here. To, to really. To, to figure out how to best communicate to all of our communities how to get those dollars. And I think we can bring. A, a presentation that kind of describes, we, we've done that once before, but it was so early on. That, you know, a lot of how those dollars were going to roll out was not known to the department even. And we're still learning. Just today, there were some more, more information from EPA on where those dollars will come through. So I think it would be great to do a presentation so that people can see the opportunities for what to do. You know, in terms of taking advantage of those infrastructure dollars. And again, with the, the amendment that Commissioner Kyle proposed. And again, with the the amendment that Commissioner Kyle proposed, I think we're really looking forward to the opportunity to be able to present kind of the state of of Oregon in terms of infrastructure and our utilities preparedness and what kind of car offerings we're having here in Oregon and what that looks like as we go through implementation of these of these rules. I I think we're really well poised with with this vote and this adoption of these rules today to bring more options and help Oregonians through a just transition. That's that's my goal, I would like to state. It is not to rush things, it's to make sure Oregon's prepared. And so I think that's that's what we're doing here today, is we're we're getting Oregon prepared. So certainly, we will bring all of those updates to you. And I see Addington has a hand.
Yes, I saw that. Commissioner Addington?
Chair George, I apologize. I am making a transition here. And I I thought I was voting to support the amendment to the original motion. And then I thought there would be another vote on the amended motion. So I I don't know the best way to do that. I'm supportive of the new language being in the motion, but I have to, I want to change my vote to no on the overall motion.
Understood. And so let's see, maybe perhaps we should check in with our counsel, Gary Vrooman. We can certainly note, and we appreciate you raising here, it's very important that you have the opportunity to be clear about your intention in your vote, and we want that too. Commissioner Addington, I guess, before I go to Gary, the first question to you is, would you like us to take action such that the official vote, you know, reflects this intention? Is that particularly important to you? Because if it is, I want to make it happen. If it's simply that you want to express this publicly, that's fine too. But I want to make sure that we reflect your vote as you want it reflected. It would, so it would appear that would not change the outcome, but I want to make sure you have that opportunity, if that's what's important to you.
Thank you. I I would like the vote to reflect that I would voted no, the record to reflect.
Thank you for that clarification. So we want to do what's necessary to make that happen. And if so, we can hold the vote again. Gary, do you have any direction or suggestion for us in regard to proper process?
Chair George, I think maybe just going on the record with the vote again, as there were some misunderstanding as to what the motion was, I think, when it was made. So why don't we, why don't we redo the vote?
We can definitely do that. That is not a problem. And we do know that, you know, using technology and things like that, when some people can see the screen and some people cannot see the screen, there there are opportunities for human error to creep in. So for everybody's convenience, Stephanie, is it possible to repost the motion that you had posted earlier? And for the record, we are going to re redo this vote because we want it to accurately reflect every Commissioner's intention in regard to this. So to do that, I will now entertain a motion to redo this action. Vice Chair?
I move that the Environmental Quality Commission adopt the proposed rules as seen on pages forty-two through sixty-three of the staff report for this item with the amended language for OAR three forty dash two fifty-seven dash zero zero five zero, as discussed at the meeting and shown in Amendment One, as part of Chapter three forty of the Oregon Administrative Rules.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we require further discussion of the proposal? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify same sign.
Opposed.
And any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for that. And it is critically important that all the Commissioners have the opportunity to be reflected as they wish on the record. So we appreciate everyone's indulgence in that regard. All right. Thank you all for a robust conversation. This is important. It is well worth taking the time to explore these ideas. And again, we want to express our very sincere thanks to our staff, who has worked so very hard on this. Director Felden, any other comments for us before we close today?
Yes, just most importantly, an expression of my gratitude to staff. Rachel has worked extremely hard on this proposal and has just done incredible work at every moment and turn. And I really appreciate her work. And that also goes for Michael Orman, our air planning manager, and for Ali Mursakalili, our air quality administrator. So thank you all for your tremendous work on these rules. That's all. Thanks, Chair.
Absolutely. We we so appreciate your hard work. All right. And so at this time, at four thirty-nine, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? With that, we are adjourned at, oh, hold on one moment here. Commissioner Addington?
That might have been a hand from earlier.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't know how to put my hand down. Sorry.
No worries. All right. So now we will adjourn at four forty. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.